Okay, everyone, I show 5:30, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to our November Committee of the Whole Meeting. Tonight's agenda just looks a little different for those of you following along at home. We are going to start tonight with some items that might more typically come at the end of the meeting, but it involves some of our student representatives and just in the interest of being respectful of their time, we're going to put them first. And then, secondly, we have some action items from last week's agenda that we did not get to go through. So we will be taking action on last week's business agenda and then we will conclude with our review of next month's agenda items. So with that, I will go ahead and do roll call. Director Barrows?
Here.
Director Decker?
Here.
Director Smith? Wendy, you're muted, okay.
Sorry, I apologize, I lost my window for a second.
Okay, and I am here and I know that Director Zavala is logging in as we speak, but we do have forums, so we can get going. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Snell, here's Sandra right now, so.
Thank you, Kyle. We're going to start this evening with an item under our board developmental, student advisory, and we have three students who are representing the board, board student rep positions tonight, and then we also have Ms. Muller from Skyview High School who's on, who is the advisor from the group. We have a couple of slides with information. You may recall back in October, we had an update on the progress and we've had a couple of meetings in between, and so the students are here to kind of share progress with you and answer any questions, and so I'm going to go ahead and present the slides and turn it over to the students at this point.
Good evening, Dr. Snell, Madam President and Board Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to present our progress to you this evening. My name is Cecilia O'Clair and I'm an 11th grader from Columbia River High School. Joining me tonight is Emily Anderson, a 12th grader from Skyview High School, and Clark Hedgewald, an 11th grader from ITech. Collectively, we're not only representing the voices of our own high schools, but also of our peers at Flex, VSA, Fort Vancouver, and Hudson's Bay. In September, we met as a group with Dr. Snell, Mrs. Muller, and Mr. Williams to discuss how we could include more of our peers' voices in district decision-making. We discussed the possibility of creating a student advisory committee, and that while it is important to include the voices, the student voices at all levels, we would start with forming the committee at the high school level first. This committee would involve up to potentially 40 students, have us engage in learning together and to provide student voice to district leaders and board directors, provide leadership opportunities for the students who are involved, have a one-year service term for students with two students staying on to serve as co-chairs in a second year, and continue with the format of monthly meetings, whether that be Zoom, in person, or both.
Hi, my name's Emily Anderson, I am the 12th grader from Skyview. Following September's kind of progress, in October, we all came together to kind of continue that discussion around what our student advisory committee would look like and have that focus, you know, of the meeting being to brainstorm some ideas around kind of some specific questions that we had, like, how could we get students interested in getting involved? On that one, we kind of talked about adding the opportunity to morning announcements, school newsletters, websites, and social media platforms. And then we also kind of discussed the idea of having other ASB members help us kind of create posters to help put up around to advertise that this is something that students can really get involved in. And then, as to who's deciding who's ultimately on the committee, we discussed what that would look like a little bit and who are we going to task with that? And how that process would work, and we kind of talked about maybe asking students to complete an application, and then after the review process of those applications, maybe holding some interviews with administrators or teachers who are interested in selecting students to be in such a position. We really wanted to make sure that this process would not become a barrier that would prevent somebody from wanting to join and kind of figuring out how that would all look. As to how these students from high school, obviously, Skyview is a lot bigger than Flex or VSA, and so we decided kind of on mirroring the Electoral College model that our country uses in that each school should have more than one representative because it's a little bit of, you know, that's a lot of pressure to put on one student from each school. So we decided on two minimum, and then from there, population-based representatives would be kind of the idea that we're going towards. And so bigger schools should have the opportunity to include more students just because there's more students there to represent. So that was our October focus.
Hello, members of the board, my name is Clark Hedgewald. A bit in November, we talked mostly about how students would, or how many students we would send in this committee. We discussed that we would send a minimum of two students with larger schools being able to send up to four to six students, depending on their population, that there are a minimum of five positions at large for a superintendent or another designated to choose student representatives, depending on where we may need those people. We also discussed for how students are choosing at each school. We are proposing that some of the students continue to be choosing through ASP and the autonomy is given to a principal or another designate with possible recommendations from this faculty or staff. And the selected groups of students will represent and encourage diverse student perspectives and voice. So thank you, Dr. Snell, Madam President and Board of Directors. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our progress tonight. We look forward to working with you all and providing updates in the near future. Thank you.
Are there any questions or feedback from the board?
I just want to thank you guys for, I can, I can tell, obviously, from all the information you've shared, how thoughtful you guys have been just in thinking about how to represent each of the schools and kind of how they're chosen. I appreciate hearing all this background on what you guys have done, so thank you for being so thorough and really being thoughtful about the process.
Yeah, I'll ditto that, thank you, thank you for joining us tonight on a Tuesday when you probably have homework. And thank you for giving us context, because I know that when the idea of transitioning this role to more of an advisory group, it was definitely a board priority to make sure that we represent our diverse student population, and it sounds like you've really been thoughtful about that, and I'm excited to see how this continues, and we look forward, I think it's the spring when we'll first start getting some reports from you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you, students, for attending this evening, and thank you, Mrs. Muller, for your support of the team as well, so. You're welcome to stay on or sign off. So, Kyle, I'll just continue with the agenda items that were in the superintendent report. The next one, I'm going to turn over to Janelle Ephraim to talk about the feedback that we received from the listening posts and share with the board some of the different perspectives we've received so far related to the student equity policy. So I'll turn it over to you, Janelle, and I'll navigate the slides, so just let me know.
Okay, thank you. All right, good to see everyone. I just want to just share with you some of the feedback that we had from the equity policy. But before I do that, I just want to make sure that we all have a clear understanding about what the equity work is, and so just wanting to review that student equity focuses on our, on the student experience. And so that includes various aspects of the student experience. We are committed to serving every student by meeting their unique needs and treating them fairly, ensuring that everyone has the opportunity to succeed, accepting each person's culture and providing a safe environment for all of our students, making sure that we give our students the tools to thrive in this world, very diverse world, and teaching our students to treat one another well, encouraging and supporting their self-esteem and their self-image in healthy ways and fostering student critical thinking. All right, next slide, please. I just want to also review our timeline for the equity policy. The goal that you've set forth is to have a equity policy established and voted on for approval by February 8. And so where we are in our timeline is in the process of getting stakeholder feedback, okay? And so I'm going to talk a little bit about what that feedback has looked like and how we have gathered it. Next slide, please, thank you. So, we put the equity policy out there a few different ways for stakeholders. It was available on our website in mid-October. There was a town hall as well as listening sessions, and during those events, we were able to share some, some of the equity work currently happening in BPS as well as share a draft policy. Next slide. So when we shared that draft policy, we essentially asked our stakeholders, what are your thoughts? And we really wanted, we wanted to leave that question broad so that people had an opportunity to share openly about whatever they, however they felt. And what we did is we looked at the themes that we saw based on what they shared. Next slide. So we had 425 stakeholders participate in sharing. Approximately 100 of those were they shared with us during either the listening session or the town hall. Of the other 300, shared, it could have been in person because of student presentations that were available or online directly from the website. Out of those 425, we had 583 thoughts that were shared and over 11,000 ratings. So basically, what that means is that those 425 folks really went through and looked at all the feedback and gave their perspective on whether they agreed or disagreed with some of the feedback from other community members. So 12% of, oops, I'm sorry, can you go back to that previous slide? Sorry, thank you. 12% of the participants were students, 39% represented our staff, 47 represented our parent group, and 7% were just general community members. Next slide. So the themes we saw, we saw three emerging themes when looking at and examining the thoughts that were shared. There were perspective A, and you'll see those thoughts, the ratings for those thoughts in blue as we look at the thoughts more deeply. But the perspective A, those stakeholders believe that there was a need for the policy and that they fully support implementation of policy, if you wouldn't mind going back to that slide. Thank you, thank you. And perspective B, believe that there was not enough evidence at this time to support a policy. And regardless of where people fail as far as their perspective, the commonality that we saw was that folks asked for greater detail in the explanation for the policy. And next slide, please. So this is just, I, I'm going to go more specific in the, in the next few slides, but this just shows us generally, the different perspectives that were shared, whether it was in support or believed that we needed more information and the common ground that we found. Next slide. So perspective A. So you'll see that generally, if folks supported the policy, they, they, they expressed thoughts of appreciation, appreciating the communication and transparency, appreciated our focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that we are looking at how to best serve all students. And so when you look at these ratings, you'll see that the blue represents folks who are in perspective A. What the green represents is the diverse perspective. So if, if we had folks in the community that did not believe that there was enough evidence to support the policy at this time, then you'll see that was, the green represents their average rating of that particular thought. Okay? Next slide. Okay, and this is the diverse perspective. Again, these stakeholders believe that there was not enough evidence to support a need for a policy, specifically very direct, I do not support this policy, or I'm against policies that teach learned helplessness. For anyone to succeed, they need accountability, not equitable policies. And the last one, if equity isn't equality, why would we want to deal with it? And so, again, if you look at the rating, you can see how our community felt about the different perspectives. Okay, next slide. So regardless of where folks fail in our community, the commonality that we saw across the board was that our community wanted more information, more detail about how we plan to implement an equity policy. And so, some of the, the top thoughts in, as it relates to commonalities were these policies feel, saying that these policies feel a little vague and lack explicit evidence of what is going to happen. Again, a statement around the policy being vague and about measurable or clearly stated goals. Okay, next slide, please. So it was clear to us that our next steps really include creating equity procedures that provide greater detail for our community and providing our community with more information about what it looks like to implement an equity, the equity work in BPS or the equity policy and procedures. And we want to continue to solicit additional feedback from our stakeholders. Are there any questions? Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Janelle.
So we'll be working on providing opportunities for folks to look at the procedures that we're drafting as a result of where we're at with the policy, knowing that both the policy could still evolve based on your feedback and our stakeholders' feedback, but trying to figure out how we can give opportunities for stakeholders to really see what, what it would look like in action and to try to bring some clarity to confusion around terms that were used or an understanding of what it could look like in action, so more to come related to that, we're still feel like we're on track for the February deadline, so. The last part of the update I have is just some general information for the board. We conducted our, a second round of all-staff meetings, we did that in late spring last year as an opportunity for staff members just to check in. We surveyed them beforehand to get a feedback, a feel of what was on their mind, and then we provided opportunities for them to connect either in the morning or afternoon to just check in with us, and so we've, you know, Zoom is something that is new to us all, but it provides a great opportunity when you have a workforce of 3,400-plus people. It's kind of hard to connect with everybody, but now we can do that, so we're trying to take advantage of that. We're looking to plan another one here in winter that's related to safety. Staff have questions about how safety gets deployed and what does that look like in action? And just want to have better understanding of that, because sometimes in your various roles in the district, you don't necessarily see the entire picture related to a safety incident, and so that's a topic that we're excited to share with, and that was generated directly from staff asking for more information about those things. The other thing that we asked in the all-staff meetings was just ideas around staff shortages and workload challenges as a result of the pandemic, and so they've provided us some great ideas, and we, as a leadership team at District Office, are working through those ideas to try to implement ones that we feel like can hopefully make a difference, so. It was just a good opportunity to engage. The second thing is there was a recent media article about OSPI grants being given to, I think, 18 school districts across the state related to a feasibility study, looking at the calendar, the school year, and how we might think differently about that in the future. Again, a lesson learned from the pandemic is that time and space maybe is a variable that students need us to be a little more flexible with. So this opportunity, it doesn't mean that the district's moving their calendar next year or anything like that. It would actually be a multi-year process that would probably engage a small group first and some sort of a pilot before we were able to do anything in a larger scale, district-wide. So anytime an article like that gets published, I just want to make sure that the public has some context to it. We also sent out some communication to staff and, and will to the community as a whole regarding that. But it's an opportunity that I know when I presented it to you as a board that there was interest in. It certainly doesn't hurt to do some research and study if there may be a better way to serve some of our students, so that's kind of in the works and we'll give you an update over the course of the year. And then if it is something that we want to move forward with, we would definitely attach that to the strategic planning process. So allow a lot of stakeholder feedback and further investigations, so just really a preliminary look at it. The next area was the elections, so obviously, we just went through an election cycle, so congratulations to Wendy and Sandra and continuing their service on the board. And we also had a holiday last week, Veterans Day, and so Lake Shore shared, they had a lot of wonderful student artworks, so I grabbed a couple of those on here to honor our veterans. And then the final area of the superintendent report is my usual pandemic response and planning. So, good news on our case rates, that we're, after a plateau the last couple of weeks, we're again seeing some drops, so that's, that's always a positive, and in my conversation yesterday in our regional meeting, it sounded like next week's, or this week's rates, this is published usually on Thursday now, would also see a drop, so that's good news. Are some updates, just the flowcharts for quarantines and contact tracing continue to be such a challenge for staff to navigate and then for our public and parents when students are identified as close contacts and in quarantine, that's just a huge hit to them, so we acknowledge that and we want to continue to try to figure out how to best support them, and we continue to advocate at the state level to, to just look at our data and the number of actual cases and transmissions that we're having at school and try to make sure that our, the policies model that data and keep up with that data. I've been told that there won't be any more updates to the K-12 recommendations until January. You know, that, that could change, obviously, but that was the last conversation that I heard. In the most recent update, there was also additions and changes to performing arts to try to mirror more closely our athletic guidance, which gives them some more flexibility. We have some performances coming up that I know that schools and students were eagerly hoping for some changes, and so that's some good news on that front. We are still doing mobile onsite testing in place and then working with a potential partner to expand those services. You know, having it at District Office can be convenient for some, but we have locations all over city, so, and county, so we want to try to make it accessible to families, and so we're working on that. We did go through the staff vaccination requirements in mid-October. I know you're aware of that and updated you on it, but that, that was a big, big, heavy lift for the district to meet that requirement, and then since we last talked about this, the vaccination approval for five to 11-year-olds came to be. At this point, there is no communication from the state about making that a requirement for students. There was a letter written by County Health that suggested not to do that, especially before it was, went through the full process in the state. So I know we've been getting some questions from patrons about the vaccination requirements, and at this point, the only vaccination requirement that we have in place is a staff vaccination requirement. And so we'll continue to monitor that and, of course, update you and the public if there are changes to that. And as I mentioned, no anticipated updates from DOH until possibly January. I wanted to just have a slide here, also, you know, for the public to access related, related to sports, winter sports. You know, in the fall, our sports outside mostly, we did have volleyball inside. But when we moved to winter, most of the sports are indoors and they have been categorized as high-risk sports by the WIAA in partnership with DOH. And so this is guidance that in order to participate, we need to meet. And so there is some screening, testing required for unvaccinated athletes in these. We do do that testing at school sites and try to support families and students and make it as easy as possible. We have trained staff members that are typically administrators and their coaches that do that. It is a self-swab test and supervised by these trained staff members. And then questions came up about the results of those tests, so negative results, we just keep in a secured spreadsheet by building in sport, and then the positive results, we have to, in accordance with Department of Health, share those with per COVID-19 protocols. And so there's a lot of moving parts on our winter sports, and so just want to make you aware of those and also make the public aware. If you don't have a student athlete, you probably wouldn't be knowledgeable of this process, and some people are happy about this process because they feel like it keeps student athletes safe, and other people aren't happy about these processes, and so but we're trying to make it as, you know, hopefully not a barrier for anyone who wants to participate. But it is definitely another layer of challenge for our staff to navigate and our student athletes. So that is the update that I had for you all tonight. Happy to answer any questions before we go back to the other parts of the agenda.
Are there any questions? I just want to thank you, Jeff, the superintendent report, it does naturally fit at the beginning. It kind of answers a lot of the, the hot topics that we hear from, so thank you for all the context that you shared. So that concludes the superintendent report. So let me pull up. Now we are moving into the agenda, this is our action item agenda for tonight, pulled from last week. So, again, these items are reviewed in our Committee of the Whole the month prior. So these were all reviewed in October, I believe it was October 18. And then they will put on the agenda for action in November. So I'm going to go through our consent to the agenda items first. Both our instructional and administrative support and our fiscal support services. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, go ahead and vote, Director Smith?
Approve.
Director Barrows?
Approve.
Director Zavala? Director Decker?
Approve.
And I also approve. So I believe there are two regular business items that I will pass off to. Oh, these are first readings that we can waive till the next month unless there are any questions or comments. Okay. Both of them are first readings on policy. Next, included in the agenda is our financial statements. So we are moving on to now contracts review. These are our contracts that will be placed on our December agenda. So tonight, we are reviewing the contracts and asking any questions that we may have, but there will be no action going forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and I believe probably Brett.
Brett, go ahead and I'll navigate each one and pause if there are questions.
Okay, thanks, Jeff, and thanks, Kyle. So yeah, so we don't have very many.
Okay, thanks Jeff and thanks Kyle. So yeah, so we don't have very many this evening, so we'll move through. First one is a recommendation to amend the bylaws of Thomas Jefferson Middle School to allow the creation of a theater club amongst their other clubs. Just real quick review process, I think you guys might have seen, there is an application process, the student body has to act, the school administration has to review. So you would be the last step in this process in which they can provide an additional club and come up with the financing and the governance structure to administer that club. So we're satisfied with their review process and recommending that you go ahead and approve that. Any questions on that? Right, then we'll move on to three capital projects that have been completed and inspected by our staff. And so it's our recommendation that all three of these be formally approved by the board, which allows us, again, as you've heard in previous months. That allows us to do the closeout process and engage some state agencies in the retainage release. And so the three projects in question, the first one is bid number 2019-059 for the Jim Tangeman Center Replacement School, formerly Fergrove Children's Center. That project concluded with a total cost of $10,699,985.24 plus Washington sales tax. And again, it has been completed to our satisfaction. So we would recommend that you approve it next month so that we can close that out. And I'll just go through the other two real quick and then maybe pause for questions if there are any on these closed out projects. The second question or second project is, was accepted under bid number 2020-055. This was for reader boards and monument sites at Ogden Elementary, McLaughlin Middle School, Marshall Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, ITech Prep. For, and now Jim Tangeman Center and Truman Elementary. And again, the total cost of these reader boards and monument signs was $314,122 plus Washington sales tax. The last project that we're recommending that you accept was under bid number 2021-008. It was a Hudson's Bay Cafe remodel. And the total cost of that project was $165,481 plus Washington sales tax. So any questions on those three recently completed projects? All right, excellent. Then move on to some new business in our capital product, or excuse me, the first one's general fund, excuse me. We are recommending that you approve purchase agreement number 2021-077. This would buy camcorders, cameras and related audiovisual equipment for our CTE programs in their high schools. The selected vendor is Adorama or Adorama Business Solutions. And the total cost would be 150,000 plus Washington state sales tax. And again, this would be funded in our general fund through our CTE budget. Questions on replacing that outdated equipment?
So that was my question. This is just replacing equipment that we've already had.
Exactly. Yeah, the descriptors that I've seen suggest that some of the equipment is well past its prime. And so this is a good opportunity to use some available funds within that dedicated budget that has to be spent on those programs to bring them up to the kind of current industry standards.
And I'm just, this is a question out of curiosity, which of our CTE programs or do they all use videography and photography?
I believe they all do because there's not a designation of certain high schools, but we can follow up if that is relegated to only certain high schools.
Well, it wasn't that. I just was curious how they use the equipment and, you know, whether it be welding or, you know, the culinary arts. I was curious. But not a pressing question.
Okay. And typically there are specific courses within the CTE program that are related to media. That's digital photography or some other of those types of courses, some of our video production teams. But we can give you some specific information about the courses that will, will be benefiting from this. And I'll follow up with that.
Okay, yeah. And it was more just out of curiosity and realizing that there's digital photography classes that makes a lot of sense.
And then also the video classes that like River competes. I mean, they've actually, the video classes at River have actually won Emmys the last two years, which is pretty exciting. And that actually qualifies under CTE as well, so.
And just for context, my imagination was getting away with me. I was wondering if they do like, almost like promo videos of their various programs that we would ever get to enjoy. But I was, you know, but. We can move on.
All right. Well, our last item that we'll recommend that you act on in the December is a recommendation to approve purchase agreement 2021-078 with Will Dan Incorporated in Beaverton, Oregon. They are our chosen HVAC provider that is administered under the Washington Department of Enterprise Services kind of energy savings. They call it the ESCO program. We've had a number of these projects over the years and they've turned out very successfully. This latest round would provide significant upgrades to the HVAC systems at Columbia River High School, Hudson's Bay High School, Skyview High School, Discovery and Jason Lee Middle Schools. So the total cost, and there are some rebates and incentives that will offset some of this, but the total cost for the contract for those five schools, significant upgrades is $14,512,016 plus Washington state sales tax. Any questions on those HVAC upgrades at those five schools?
This is again a clarification question, but these contracts are for installation and upgrade only. They don't include ongoing maintenance. Is that correct?
Correct.
We maintain.
There, I believe certain components of the systems have warranties on them. So they would be maintained for the duration of the warranty by the contractor or the subcontractor. But eventually we will maintain the systems ourselves. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all we have tonight for contracts. Thank you.
So next on the agenda is our policy and procedures review. I'm guessing is this primarily?
Yes. There are, you have two policies on your agenda for your consideration. The first one is policy 3220, Freedom of Expression. And the proposed revisions clarify what content can be removed from student media publications. This change is based on recent change in the law. And the topics that can be edited or removed include things like violation of laws or policies or any content that would create a disruption or any content that would incite violence. So it's a small clarification, but an important one to our freedom of expression policy. Are there any questions about that one? The second policy for your consideration is policy 3411, Accommodating Students With Seizure Disorders or Epilepsy. This is a new mandatory policy based on legislative changes during the 2021 legislative session. And the new law was passed to accommodate students with seizure disorders or epilepsy. It requires seizure response training for school staff and for parent-designated adults who will care for students with seizure disorders. The new law requires individual health plans for these students. And it also requires the district to have a policy. And I've outlined in your summary, the components that have to be in the policy. Any questions on that one? Okay, thank you.
So the next item under teaching and learning review is a recommendation to approve a name for the Early Childhood Evaluation Center. So again, this is an opportunity for us to share with you the process to date and get any feedback related to that before we would bring this item as consideration from the board for action. And so I'm going to turn it over to Tom to give you context on this.
Thanks, Dr. Snell. Good evening, board. Nice to see everyone. We're really pleased to bring forward a recommendation from the Foundation for Vancouver Public Schools and an advisory committee to name the Early Childhood Evaluation Center in recognition of two exceptionally generous donors who have contributed to Vancouver Public School students over the last two decades, a total of more than $8 million, including a recent estate, family estate gift that the foundation will announce more broadly after the first of this year. The family of Pam Edstrom and Joe Lambertson have been longtime supporters of the district. It started relatively modest, in a modest way with donating winter coats to students in need and expanded greatly from there over the years. Particularly around Mr. Lambertson's passion, which was early child, early childhood education. The Lambertson family was a relatively private family in Vancouver, not very well-known in the community and wanted to engage in this philanthropy, kind of below the radar, not wanting a lot of credit for it. Both Pam and Joe are deceased now. And but just to let you know a little bit of background on them. Joe was an ironworker and actually early in his career worked on the Fremont Bridge in Portland, as well as a number of recognizable projects. And then later founded his own construction company, which among other facilities built the recognizable towers of the Oregon Convention Center. So he's a very successful businessman. And then Pam Edstrom is the co-founder of Whitehead Edstrom Public Relations Firm, which is well-known globally. Their first major client and primary, primary clients over the years is Microsoft. And was instrumental in building that company into a global organization. So pretty special to have them here in Vancouver. The foundation is recommending that we, the board consider naming the Early Childhood Evaluation Center in their honor. They would like to proceed on a timeline that would allow them to make a public announcement sometime after the first of next year. And hold some public recognition ceremonies or celebrations in honor of Pam Edstrom and Joe Lambertson. Be happy to answer any questions that the board has. As you can see in the documents we provided, there have been three variations of a name that have been suggested to provide some opportunity for the board to choose which name they think is most appropriate for the facility. We also have, just to let you know, put a temporary hold on creating any signage for that center, which has been renovated and we're waiting until we have board approval so that we can move forward with the signage. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm just curious, because I know there's three different kind of versions that include their names. Do have, do the children of Pam and Joe have any kind of feedback on those? Because obviously, you know, one is just their last names, one is their full names, then one is their first names. I'm just, I'm just curious if they have kind of any preference or have expressed any desire to see like their parents' full names or, you know, just the last names if they've given feedback.
Sure. Well, we definitely have consulted the family generally on the, whether they're supportive of the naming recommendation. And they certainly are. I'm not sure if they were asked specifically. I believe not, not a Wheelock, the executive director of the foundation is monitoring the meeting tonight and could possibly be promoted as a panelist. And see if she can answer that question. I'm not sure. Other, if not, we can certainly follow up with them after, between now and the next meeting.
Just to name again on that?
Yeah.
I think Jefferson, I think the name is Nada Wheelock.
Hi.
Yeah, there's Nora.
I can hear you and maybe you can see me. Hi. Thank you, Dr. Snell and Board of Directors for entertaining this proposal. And the four children were all consulted whether naming their parents would be acceptable. And they said yes. I know Pam Edstrom, her name is on a library or a wing of a library in Oregon and her full formal name is used. So I have not consulted them specifically on the three variations, but I would be happy to do that. And I guess a fourth variation could be the formal name Pamela Edstrom and Joseph Lambertson. So I can take that as an action item and then bring that back to your consideration in December. Thank you.
So I guess my question, I mean, we're so fortunate to have wonderful community support and wanting to honor them in the way they want to be honored. I think is my opinion is making sure that we recognize how they want their names to appear. But I'm also thoughtful of how the building will be commonly referred to because some of these names are quite lengthy, especially thinking through early childhood evaluation. So maybe there's a formal name, but then Pam and Joe's would be an appropriate nickname. I just want to make sure that we don't name it with such a mouthful that it's kind of not accessible for our community members. Any other thoughts from board members?
I'll, I'll just jump in and kind of echo what you were saying, Kyle, because that's exactly what I was thinking. I was almost thinking making, you know, using the full formal name of Pamela and the Joseph. And yeah, it's a, it's a long mouthful, but just keeping in mind that it's going to be shortened or abbreviated. There's going to be some sort of shorthand, whether that's Pam and Joe's or Edstrom, Edstrom and Lambertson. But I think, I think there's value to having the full name there because like when I saw this, I immediately Googled them. I want to know more about that. And if the full name is there, then I mean, that goes a step further towards recognizing them. People can research and find out more about them because they know the full name. So I think in an effort to truly recognize them and kind of help the community connect with them, having their full name on there is really valuable.
I would agree with that. That's, and why I had asked what the children's preference was because that third option, just Pam and Joe's, while it's much kind of easier to say or kind of rolls off the tongue a little bit easier, I don't know that it, unless that was a preference of the children, you know, that I think you're left wondering who are Pam and Joe. And it seems a little, well, it seems a little informal and doesn't necessarily honor them. I think in the way of, you know, like having their formal names on a building. That's why I was kind of wondering if those were, kind of had been run by the family or kind of what their thoughts were.
The family is open to the full formal name being used. I think the informal variations, we're thinking of the audience and the community. That being said, even Jim Tangeman Center, I understand people abbreviate JTC, clearly spelling everything out. So I think it would be appropriate to have the full formal name and then the staff or however it evolves into the nickname could be a secondary informal activity.
Okay, are there any other thoughts or I think? Okay. Are there any other thoughts? Or I think it sounds like everyone's kind of in agreement of honoring the full name of the both Pam and Joe, but then also perhaps coming up with an accessible way to reference the building. And so all of our community members can kind of connect with the space. It is a long, it is a long name. Okay. Are there any other thoughts on this topic? Thank you, Tom, for taking the lead on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. One quick announcement, we don't have a study session next week because it is a holiday week for Thanksgiving. So our next meeting is December 14th, our regular business meeting. It also concludes this year of board leadership. So I have asked Director Decker and Director Smith to serve on our nominating committee. And we will vote on new board chair and vice chair in December. So with that, meeting is adjourned. Are there, oh, Dr. Snell?
I just was going to say, we do have a study session planned for November 30th, the week after Thanksgiving. So just as a reminder.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned. So everyone have a good night. Thank you very much.